Educating, Informing, Serving. Fact TV, Keeping Government Honest. You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the town of Westminster Select Board Meeting.
But I think you'd be able to get 10 cars parked, you know, not sideways or whatever.
Yeah, angled in there.
Right, yeah.
They looked at it, but I didn't even know if it was wide enough, you know, to be able to get them in and then people pull out.
Because there's, you know, space on both sides of the building.
That's my only concern is...
Well, I can see that. I mean, 10 spaces, if you went 10, 12 feet of space, that's 120 feet. Is there around 120 feet in front?
Yeah.
I don't know where the right side...
Recording in progress.
There's a hydrant on the left, so you gotta be...
Yeah, then you gotta, someone's gotta get in there and be able to say, you know...
The night of the meeting out there, I went to it. I was able to drive my pickup on the north side all the way down to the corner of the property and nose into the building, just because I was curious. I wondered if I could get down there and back out easily and how many vehicles, what that would look like. And it looked like you might be able to get like eight or nine vehicles on the north side parked that way angled in.
Yep.
You'd back, you'd back all the way out.
No, I don't get out and drive out. If you could get two rows, if you did what you just said and run them back all the way out. But to do it that way, I think you could get, what did you say, some more vehicles parked.
That's on top of the ones that faced the road.
Those on top, the ones on the road, yeah. Those would be on the north side of the building.
I think it would be great to know, you know, we'd get so many parks.
Figure it out.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
So like in a month, that couple will come back.
Yeah.
Parking will be one of the issues.
Yeah, for me, it's a big issue.
Yeah, okay.
I looked at it, I wasn't sure, but I didn't go in there with a measuring tape.
Yeah, well, you don't want to inconvenience neighbors with parking on their yard or on the street.
There's no room on the street really. Maybe in the front, there's a whole few spots. Those would be handicapped anyway.
I think the committee has done marvelous work. And imagine some way to use this building that has been essentially underused forever so long.
Right.
So just to get people to sign up to be interested, I think is a...
Thank you right now. So back in a month.
In a month.
Great, thank you.
You're very welcome, thank you. We received a letter from Sarah Waldo regarding maintenance on the website. And I had spoken with Sarah and she is going to attend a future Select Board meeting so we can have discussions about website things. And we received a letter from Tammy Kissel regarding a washout on Daigle Road that is in front of her driveway. That Ben Mishore from the Highway Department fixed, George Chuck was on vacation. And I know that there are ongoing issues with water with that property. And I know that both Kevin and Jason have, and Mr. Lawrence, have been there with state engineers to address this. Do we want to make it an agenda item in the future? Or do we want to do it? I was not involved in that, that was before my time. So I'm not really aware of what the situation was previously, so...
That was probably two years ago, I would guess. Russ was still here. When we looked at it, we had left there wanting or thinking about doing some work on her property. On, so town doing work on her property. I think the more we thought about it, that was not a good idea. It would set a precedent that, you know, somebody tried to buy town's equipment on somebody clearly way out in their property, not like on the edge. I thought she was gonna try to get somebody to do it on her own. I don't, I don't know if she did or not. Well, I know she didn't because it's not done, but...
And the letter didn't include that?
Yeah, I haven't read the letter.
And I'm not sure that would solve what you're...
This driveway issue.
No, I don't think it, I don't think it would. And that, that area is just wet. It is just a wet area. I just did some work there. That field is a swamp. I don't think it's caused, the washing in the front, okay, I might, I might be able to get behind that, but the wet field is definitely not, it's wet. It is wet. So I don't, I don't know. We all gotta come to some agreement and give a little bit to make it work on both sides.
I know.
At that time, we kind of both really didn't want to give. So I think we just need to figure it out. An agenda item, I don't...
So she has not contacted you. So do you want to swing by? That makes the most sense.
I think we should let them, if they can work it out and figure it out.
Okay.
Fine, if it, if we just can't and things just don't want to work, then we'll talk about it at this level, I guess. If that works for you.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I do. Probably want this motion.
And if we have to, we'll make it an agenda item next time. Okay.
Well, when is that, you see?
I got it coming.
So, I'm sorry, I just asked again.
Yes.
So Chuck's gonna go and look at it and try and come up with a solution.
Yes.
I'm really good at it.
Thank you. Any other communications or public comments? All right. So Veds Get On Board program, that would be you.
That's me. Hello, everybody. My name is Rachel Shields Ebersole. I work for Gravel World Development Credit Corporation. But I'm here tonight to talk to you about a Southern Vermont program that we're running to help try to get more people equipped to be effective leaders, doing community projects, being on the Select Board, being maybe on the Planning Commission, joining nonprofits in town, et cetera. You've all probably experienced that it's really hard to get as many volunteers as we need to do the work that needs to be done. And you've all probably experienced being in a volunteer role where you didn't really feel equipped to like do what you needed to do, or you didn't feel like your role was very clear. So we're creating a program for people who are interested in just growing in community leadership called So Vermont, Southern Vermont Get On Board. And there'll be, it'll be four Saturdays from October through January for interested, aspiring, engaged community leaders across Southern Vermont, so Wyndham and Bennington Counties, to get together and learn from people who are doing it. People who will have Vermont Council on Rural Development will lead a session, Vermont League of Cities and Towns will lead a session. We'll have some town moderators talk about productive community dialogue, that sort of thing. So we expect a cohort of probably 25. Our dream would be 40, you know, just having people from every town in the region would be amazing. We already have about 17 applicants and applications are open through September 29th.
How are you recruiting?
How are we recruiting? We are...
Can I touch you too?
Yeah, that's why I'm here. We are talking to the Select Board and saying, do you have folks in mind that you'd love to see mentored into a leadership position? We'd love for you to send them our way. We're doing a lot of, you know, email and social media outreach as well. And we'd love to have your help too in, in sharing this information. So I believe you all would have received a media kit with things you can post on such a forum, a flyer you could print out at the library, et cetera. And we'd also really love to ask you to consider sponsoring a participant or two because that will really encourage people from the town. The cost for the course is $150. You know, most of the, most of the cost of the course and the staff time to develop it is covered by grants from the USDA and Vermont Community Foundation. But we'll be feeding people lunch and booking locations, that sort of thing, and offering scholarships to people who need it. So if towns are able to sponsor a participant or two, that will help to free up other spots for, for other scholarship folks. And really, if we can say, you know, hey Westminster folks, your Select Board has agreed to sponsor you if you want to go to this program, then I think that will really encourage people to take a look. So that's kind of an overview, a couple of different ways to support, you know, if you want to just help us get the word out, if you're interested in sponsoring, that sort of thing. But I'd love to know if you have questions or maybe share more details. So I'll leave it there.
And you're accepting applicants registrants until September 29th?
That's right.
I mean, you can have through the school system. I'm thinking of younger parents are often right at the verge of hopefully being involved in town government. And they might be in the school system and maybe thinking of activity through the school system, the school board involvement in that too.
Yes, school board involvement is definitely one of those.
But sometimes that just flows to all the other ones. But maybe if you want to reach younger and inexperienced, community-interested people, schools might be a good place to do that with the school system. So I would guess urge you to do the same thing with the school board.
I love it, thank you for that. Do we want to post something in our locations where we post things? And would we be interested? I don't know of anybody off the top of my head. But do we want to potentially sponsor somebody if there are interested people? Or see if there's interest and then open that? Or what is, does the board have a preference?
I would say yes. You know, we have a really big problem trying to get people on the planning commission.
I agree.
On the, I don't know. Every commission they have.
Every commission and board.
Every office we have and the board.
Listers.
The school board listers, et cetera. Some of us are actually marketing members. And so I would say this is a worthy investment to, to... If it's simply a matter of putting a little, you know, sheet on our various town bulletin boards, that's easy.
Right.
We can contemplate later whether we're actually funding them. But to at least announce it on our favorite bulletin board out here, or West, I don't know if there's a Northwestern, in terms of town.
On the bulletin.
What's that?
On the Northwestern Community Hall.
On the Northwestern Community Hall.
I'll bet you it's that one.
And the Gazette. Yeah.
Makes sense.
That sounds lovely.
Makes sense to me. Gauge the interest first.
Right. Do we, interested parties should contact you or contact the town? How does that work?
Probably, probably me.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, so in the, and I can send you whatever would be helpful, but I think all the contact info you need would be in that media kit.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks for your support.
All right. Thank you. Hopefully we can get some engagement.
Yeah, I think so too.
All right. Any further questions? All right, thank you for coming. Next up, ARPA proposal, probably the fire department, which we discussed briefly at the last meeting. And the proposal is in your package. Does anybody have any questions for Paul? Paul's here.
Thank you, I will do the question, Paul. Sounds like a great idea. This is over $10,000. We should have bids or we need to vote to bypass the bid process because there's nobody else to do the work. So, or no other options. You have to do our diligence in following our bid policy. So this is total of 35 some odd, is that right?
Yes.
And we have, we can give one estimate here. And what is your assessment of whether we can get other people to? Do we have a bid on this, or is this, is this just...
You should have a second bid in here. If they didn't give you a second bid, there are two companies that have a bid on it. One was 35, 535. The other was a total of, you know, 50,000, 52,000, somewhere in there.
So you gave, you gave us here the most logical one, but it wasn't the only one.
Correct, there were two.
There were two. Now, a bid policy asterisk three, but that...
There are only two companies that do it and would give us a bid.
So...
I'll make the motion to suspend the bid process for the air pack compressor for the fire department due to the specialty item and only receiving two bids. But I will second that vote.
And can we add that, that we accept this bid, this particular...
That'd be a second motion.
Let me second motion, okay.
Motion has been made, seconded to suspend the bid process for the air pack compressor using ARPA funds for the fire department.
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And then I'll make a motion that we accept this bid from, I'm just trying to get the correct, is it the Fire Matic Supply Company? Yes. For the best language. All right, that's far, sure bid for Fire Matic Supply Company for a total, oh, sorry. 30, is that 35, 535?
Correct.
For 35, 535, for the air, high-pressure breathing air compressor.
Second it.
Motion has been made and seconded to use ARPA funds to purchase an air pack compressor for Westminster Volunteer Fire Department. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yes.
And just a procedural thing. This is actually being purchased by the fire, is the district being purchased by the town.
It's being used through the ARPA. So ARPA funds through the town.
ARPA funds through the town. So this is a town spending money on a very good cause to be used by the fire department.
The fire district is a town organization.
Yeah, I know, but they have a separate tax structure and all that. Separate budget and all that. ARPA money, of course, is kind of a separate pocket, but...
The only thing different is the funding.
Who's, how, how does this work?
The only thing different is the funding. It's coming from ARPA fund versus a fire department or general fund or whatever.
Instead of being raised your taxes.
Yeah.
But it would be only by district, right?
Yes.
Is the town sort of, perfectly fine, giving it to the district through? How do we do that? I mean...
That's the same way, it's worth the other purchases.
Yeah.
It's the same way, it's worth the other purchases that the fire department has received from ARPA funds.
At least a three or four.
They submit, they submit the invoice and it's paid through the ARPA. And then it's their responsibility. It's their responsibility after that. We don't maintain, they take care of everything that's been purchased. But it's for the town good.
I mean, it makes perfect sense. It just, I mean, in terms of getting this piece of, the only thing is having our, appearing of the town for the town budget expenditures in each thing.
So completely separate line item for ARPA, it'll come under, it'll fall under that.
So it won't, it won't fall through the general fund, it won't fall through the appearance of town spending of next March.
Or it shouldn't.
Well, we got a report, I think, two or three meetings ago, listed everything that was spent out of that account or line item or whatever it's called.
All right. Errors, oh, grand list reappraisal. So we have received a letter from the State Vermont Department of Taxes. And based upon our 2022 equalization study, Westminster was outside the parameters and therefore, in order to reappraise, has been issued. At this time, we need to respond to this order to indicate receipt of the order and intention to develop a detailed compliance plan. And that needs to be returned, probably this week, I believe. When turn first, yes. Within 30 days. And do you have anything to add to that, Pauline?
Rachel probably would have more to comment on that.
Oh, that's true.
Yeah, Rachel will speak to that.
You're up.
Okay. So this letter from the state is, as you said, needs to be signed by you. It's a acknowledgement that the board, the Select Board is aware that we're required by statute to perform a townwide reappraisal. Aside from that, as I understand it, through multiple conversations with Cy Bailey, our district advisor, and the State Department of Taxes, the listers are responsible for all the stages and steps in this process. We want to keep you informed about where we are and what we're doing and get any input from you that seems useful to us. But I have a few sort of facts or points of information that I think would be helpful as people begin finding out that we're at this stage and have questions for you, you might have some information. So first point of information is there, there are two different statistics that the state compiles from the so-called education study that the listers are required to participate in. So every sale that takes place in the town of Westminster, we have to put it into this database. If it's a valid sale, hit an arm's length sale or non-valid. And then they, over a rolling three-year period, do some calculations to see, to calculate these two different data points. One, the CLA, the Common Level Appraisal, which is the difference between the sort of average, it's a little less simple than that, the average market value of properties in the town of Westminster versus the assessed values across the board in the grand list. Formerly, there was an inflection point for that that would also trigger a requirement for a statewide reappraisal. But because of the craziness in the market during the pandemic, two-thirds of, approximately two-thirds of the towns in Vermont would be required by statute under that, that data to have, to begin this same process of townwide appraisal. And so the legislature just removed that common level appraisal. They're still calculating it for every town, but they're not using it as a requirement. Only the, the other data point, which is a little, a little less easy to explain, the coefficient of dispersion, or COD, is a measure of fairness. So as, as sales prices of properties vary from the assessment, so if someone sells their home, they're way more, way less than the town's appraisal, it's not atypical for properties at the high end of the market to become, to escalate more than ones at the low end of the market. And it creates an unfairness in the grand list that people are, people with lower value properties are paying a higher percentage for their property than people at the higher end. And that's the, that's the statistic that the state is still using to determine when, what the threshold is for requiring a townwide appraisal. And we also have surpassed that threshold significantly, which basically means it's, the grand list is no longer fair and equitable, which is the lister's main job is to maintain the grand list in that way. So long-winded way of saying, it's, it's good for people to have a townwide reappraisal when you get out of sync with both of these, in both of these situations. It's slightly better for Westminster that they removed the one threshold because it means there will be somewhat fewer towns being required to do it simultaneous with us because there are a limited number of companies that are approved by the state of Vermont to perform this townwide reappraisal. And we're going to be competing with all of the other towns who need to do this to get their, to get their contract worked. So what stage we're at? We have a draft request for proposals that is modeled after many other towns. It's been learned by Cy Bailey and a couple of other folks for sort of understanding what it is that we're asking these companies to do. There are nine companies just in Vermont that will probably request to bid. I don't know what, which of those will come through with it. I don't know if it's in your package or not. I made a couple of copies. If anyone, I, I've never made a request for proposals before. So there's some language and some elements that I have no idea what they are. Or if you have thoughts or reactions from previous townwide reappraisals that occurred and you want to make sure that we do a good job of it this time, you're welcome to take this and give us some feedback. We, we've still left the date that we're ready to nail this blank. So we, you know, we hope, hope we'll get started with it sooner rather than later so we can get in queue of whoever we choose. The other thing that I understand is the board of listers gets to choose which bid to accept. It's not whoever's the cheapest, it's the one that gives us the best proposal to fulfill the needs that we have. This is a complicated thing, a townwide appraisal, it's lots of details, lots of software that's involved. The listers have a slight preference for NIMRIP because there's, we use their software, we use them as the, as our consultants. Preiser is a NIMRIP contracted person. So that means that they'll understand sort of how our system is already set up. They're not going to require us to get new software. But if somebody else comes through with a proposal that looks really good and is a good deal or whatever, we're not going to assume that we're going to use them. But that choice, as I understand it, it's not you all, it's, it's us who have to figure it out. We're, again, we're happy to receive support and advice from people who know more about parts of this process.
So you are, you are going to put it out to bid?
Yes, we are, yes.
Do you, do we have money to pay for this?
Yes, so this, this sales study that I was talking about, that is where the state gathers these statistics about the relationship between the town's assessment and the market. The listers are simultaneously required to do that and the town is paid for our time in doing that. So we get a per parcel annual chunk of money that goes into an account. And we have, there's a note. Right now, we have $202,619.28 in that fund. And we get about, there's not that number. We get about $20,1800 per year for this. So the longer it takes to, until we're getting it done, the more money we'll have. There's an estimate from the state that it's about $100 per parcel to perform a townwide appraisal. So that's $180,000 and we already have significantly more. We have some, some cushion there. And we'll have an even bigger cushion if those costs go up widely between 20 and 26.
That makes me feel better. That makes me feel better.
Yeah, so there are some, some expenses that we won't really necessarily know about till we get the bids. For example, if they say you need different software, or you need another computer, or you need this or that, some things we can't, we can't really predict. But it's going to be in that ballpark. We definitely have the, the money in that, that fund that comes in from the state area. Obviously, we all don't pay, pay taxes, just put the money into that fund. But that's why that, they do it that way. So the town has that money. And it doesn't prevent us from wanting to do the thing that we're supposed to do and is really beneficial for the town.
So the timeline on this, if I read that, I read that letter that came, is we're supposed to get a letter out saying we know we have to do this?
So you need to nail that back.
Yes.
Sign it, you're signing it.
And then, and then after that, we're putting out these bids and how much time do we have to do this?
We have...
Go ahead.
Nope. So we, we have a little fudge time because they know it's not, you can't instantaneously just tackle the ordinary appraisal. I would say in the next month or two, we need to show the state good faith that we're moving forward. They already know that we're working on this because of the... They already know that we're working on this because of the experience of the, none of the listers were listers when we did the last one. So they're, they're supportive of the fact that it takes a while. And we're aware we should be as far as, as our preparation. But we'll try to get this thing out in the next few weeks so we can.
This thing being a request for proposals?
Request for proposals to get people to know how long it takes.
When do we have to have this done by?
When we can get it done. So again, they know there's a limit, there are limited resources for performing it. They're telling me it'll be 2026, 2027. And obviously, by that time, the market will be entirely different. But we still need to do it. The last time it was done was in 2013. That's all 10 years ago. By the time it's done, it'll be well over 10 years. And lots of things change without us knowing. Even though you've asked the listers to do, you know, to try to check 20% of our parcels per year, we're really just doing a drive-by on those. We're not going inside. We're not asking questions about if someone put in a fancy schmancy hot tub or something. So this stuff gets, you know, gets dated. The records are not perfect. From my experience now, the past, maybe five years or so, there's a lot of errors in the, in the records. Some, you know, human error or subjectivity. And it would be nice to have that stuff tidied up, kind of brought up to standards. Our assessor, Tyler Shaw from NIMRIP, he's been working for about a year and a half now. And he's very detail-oriented. He was new when he started, but he learned quickly. And he, he really gets into a record and he's like, why did they do it this way? It's such a mess. And he can't go and fix every record. But the townwide reassessment will get us sort of more standardized and it'll make everybody's work easier. It'll make his work easier, it'll make the listers. We'll make fewer errors if it, if things are not kind of a mess.
Can I ask you, who needs to sign this reappraisal?
The chair.
All right. I'll make a motion to, I have some questions.
Oh, oh, sorry.
Sorry it's so long.
Not at all. It's a fine synopsis and I really appreciate it very, very much as a taxpayer. And thank you for all the extra work you got done because I know you guys have gone beyond the call given what's been going on with the listers. I really appreciate it. I had a couple of quick questions. You mentioned 2013, the appraisal was, last time it was done. I am correct in making an assumption that back then we did not hire an outside third party and it was actually done by internal listers, correct?
That's true. Yes.
So my question is, are you aware that the state has changed this policy and that we are now required to have as one of their chosen people to do it?
Yes, a certified organization is only permitted to do it.
Thank you. The second thing you mentioned was you didn't feel as if reappraisal was likely before '25, '26?
It's possible. So I first thought that number, I got that date before the statute changed. So I don't know, I haven't seen a new statistic about how many towns are still going to be in the queue. But it's going to be a fair.
There's a law.
Yeah, it's not going to be, maybe, I think.
Sure.
We want to have it as soon as we can.
Okay.
And we were planning on this last year, even before the state told us that we had to do it because we thought it was inevitable. We're going to have to do it anyway.
Right.
So I'm, if, if we are with NIMRIP, you know, maybe, I'm not sure how many assessors are with NIMRIP, but maybe they will give us a heads up because we list with them.
Okay.
So the faster, the sooner the better for me, as far as I'm concerned. We can get somebody to do it because I don't think the grand list is fair right now. There's a, you know, I see somebody buying a parcel for $800,000 and they're only getting taxed for $400,000.
Okay.
They bought this property in 2013. So that's 10 years of really not getting the value of what they're doing. And, and the, just the fairness of the grand list, I think, has to change.
Sure. I've heard you and I appreciate that greatly. I'm just more concerned in the timeline and the cost for this. I was chair, I believe, two years ago. And this came up, we tabled it. Now, at the time, we had one bid. And I know that's on the record, $154,000 of the bid. That's on the record. I don't recall exactly why we pushed that off. The discussion was begun.
I don't remember anything about that. Did it involve the listers? Or was it the select board?
It involved NIMRIP, I'll put it that way. It's on the record. And the gentleman, there's a gentleman who's in charge. He's very good and I can't remember the guy's name. Nathan, I think, had brought it up, but it was.
At that time, it might have been Al.
Yes.
Is he no longer?
Right. So he's still works for NIMRIP, but he's no longer on maintenance and appraiser. Tom is the.
Sure. And since it's your call on the expertise, I would just, again, I remember a $154. I know time has gone by, costs have gone up again. And now you're up to $180 or.
And that's just, they just say it's about $100 per parcel. We have 1800 parcels.
Okay. So again. I'm sorry. I have one last thing. Thank you for everything you guys are doing. It's probably important, though, considering this affects everyone, to do our level best to get as many bids as possible. And you guys obviously evaluate the competency or familiarity with our town. Obviously, NIMRIP would have an advantage there. I totally agree with what you're saying. But I think from an optical standpoint, it's very important that the townsfolk, especially if we're getting a lift across the board in taxation, which is highly likely, at least at this point, that we made it look as if we did it. Every effort to try and make sure we got this done.
So that's sort of, I'm, I'm hoping that we will be able to have a narrative about the townwide reappraisal that will make people not look a stance at it, that will make them feel, well, that they'll want to open their home to the assessor who calls on them. In fact, taxes don't necessarily go up because the grand list has gone up. If the budget is the same and the grand list is bigger, the tax rate goes down. So if nobody's, if, if an individual's parcel goes up and their neighbor's goes down for whatever reason, yes, the person whose, whose assessment went up is going to have higher taxes. The person whose assessment went down is, or it didn't go up very much, is going to possibly have lower taxes. So the, the level of the grand list, per se, doesn't affect taxes. It, it, it's the tax rate which is determined by what the budget is that's passed.
Correct. But perception is everything out there with the folks.
And there definitely will be individuals, especially those who purchased their home in the last three years, who their assessment has been quite a lot by and large. Whereas other people who haven't done anything in 20 years, their, their assessment may stay more.
Thank you for all your leadership in this.
But we do want to try to communicate. And this is why I'm maybe giving you more information than you think you need. Because people will ask you questions as much as they will, the listers. And if you feel comfortable understanding, if the whole grand list is whatever it is and you set, we pass a budget, the tax rate is a calculation based on that, the whole town's taxes are going to go up when the grand list is.
I'm just going to agree with you, but also suggest that as we approach the actual appraisal, when it's fairly close to having people again welcome those appraisals into their house, that we should have an article in the Gazette.
Absolutely. Yes.
That would nicely explain what's happening, that this is, the intention is to increase the fairness of taxation in the town, not to increase the tax burden of the town. Tax burden is simply determined by our budget. And the tax rate then for individual properties is determined by fairness. And it's only through this logical process that we can have a fair system in our town. And so if we, if we approach it that way, there will be many people who put in a new kitchen or something that will be afraid, afraid of paying a lot more in taxes. And so we need to do something to reduce that apprehension and allow these appraisers to do their job in a non-confrontational manner because I could see it being confrontational in some circumstances.
There's another piece that we've been very careful to put in the, in the request for proposals. And that is that the company that does the reappraisal work also continues to give us support after the fact. In, for example, there are going to be way more grievances simply because way more people will receive a notice of the grievance hearing that is happening. Most everyone will have some change in value. And that automatically triggers that letter that you get when you have a change of value that says grievance hearings are such and such. Here's what you do if you want one. There will inevitably be more, even though many of those people probably don't have a problem necessarily. We just want to understand what's happening. And this company that we choose will participate and help us to do those things up until the BCA stage. In fact, if we, for whatever reason, have had even more people coming back after grievances. So those, we'll, we'll get those people to help us with every stage and every element of the process, not just going out and measuring, you know, people's living lives and deaths.
Can I clarify two things? You, listers put it out to bid in RFP. You, it's on your purview who you pick. You bring that proposal back to the board. The board approves the expenditure of the money. Or am I?
I'm not even sure that you, you have to do that.
It's over $10,000.
I know, but there's.
Unless there's some, something I'm missing.
Yeah. I mean, there's something I may be missing.
Right.
My understanding is that we have that money in that pot for this exact purpose. We select the person that's, or the company that's going to.
It still has to come by policy. The town's spending more than $10,000.
Yeah, I think that should be clarified.
We will, we will. We will approve your recommendation. But in terms of the way it goes, come to us with your recommendation. And if it seems good to us, which as you are most knowledgeable about this, I think it will, please bring that to us for us to say yes so that there's not a question of a large amount of money being spent without a proper procedure. And so thank you.
Well, and also, as I said at the beginning, anyone who wants to help, to help us to participate both in the, in the bid process, figuring out which one is best, anyone who thinks that they have some expertise that would be useful to us. The three of us are, you know, just some kind of random people who got elected to be listers. And so, so we're not, we don't have any kind of necessarily lock on understanding what the process should look like. We also depend a lot on our various resources in the state and people from NIMRIP who do these things all the time. Ask, we've asked a lot of questions. We've gone to some other towns who recently had, had it done to find out what their experience was like. So we're trying to do, trying to do this weekend.
And there will be a mailing to everybody in town saying that the reappraisal is coming up and what to expect. It won't be just in the Gazette. It'll be.
When you do this, you know, I've, I've already heard from someone I know in Vermont, oh, look at my new, you know, here's flipping out. And I'm like, no, no, the tax rate doesn't change. It went up, the tax rate will go down.
We really have to get that point.
The education part.
Very much so. Because that's what we'll be dealing with.
That needs to be in the letter, in the Gazette. It needs to be pounded in because there's a lot of people that.
Well, it's actually an advantage that it's going to be a little bit of a delay. You know, we're not going to do it this year. That we have time to talk to people and teach them. I already put stuff in the 2022 annual report about this thing on the horizon. And now we'll have more specific information by next thing, next meeting. It's the, the next meeting if you want us to.
I think two years ago, Kevin, I think we were on the cusp of.
We were close.
We were close, but I think we kind of, we backed off it because we didn't know what was going to happen and where things were. And that's, I think that's where that.
Or perhaps, I think, maybe we came in just under the state.
At the time.
That number. I think we did. But I just remembered that number. So, but again, thank you, guys. You guys are fantastic. Okay?
I'll, I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Yes, I need a motion.
Sorry. I'll, I'll make the motion to accept the Westminster Municipal Response to Reappraisal Order Letter and authorize the chair to sign.
Seconded.
Motion has been made and seconded to accept the, to sign the response for reappraisal order issued by the state of Vermont, Department of Taxation. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much.
All right. Errors and omissions. Correcting omission from the grand list after return. Want to do this one? You're good. Thanks.
Gee, thank you. Following error and omission is submitted for the record to the Westminster Select Board for consideration on Wednesday, August 23rd. Under Vermont Statute Title 32, Taxation and Finance, Chapter 129, Grand List, pursuant to 32 VSA S4261. Following parcel has been subject for error and omission consideration. It was submitted on 8/16/2023. Parcels, excuse me, number 003013. The owner, Barnett Brandon, that's, excuse me, Barnett Daz Brandon, Ms. Susan E. Location 1677, Route 121. Current list, grand list value assessment, $50,800. Reason for error and omission request: Applying Veterans Exemption Incorrectly Omitted by Listers Reduced This Parcel Value by $40,000 to $8,000, this makes it $10,800. Respectfully, Rachel Cohen, Lister.
I'll second.
Motion has been made and seconded to accept the error and omission for parcel number 003013 as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. CDL Drug Testing Feedback. Does anybody have any comments? Does anybody have a chance to look at it?
It was a couple packets ago at these.
Oh, yes. We might not have actually.
Maybe in three.
Oh, no, you did. You did because you were here. Because there was the, the drug testing.
This is, okay. Yeah, yeah. This is about the process.
Thank you so much.
Correct. Correct. This is, this is the policy.
That, that policy that was presented was written by, that was on the VLCT.
Their boilerplate.
Boilerplate policy.
And it's, I'm trying to read quick like a discussion of time. It seemed like it did not include.
Some medications, substances. That's because I don't think they test for them routinely. This is like the standard DOT test.
So the, the whole of this is the biggest things that we're dealing with in this country right now, which is fentanyl and psilocybin. I, that's, that's just my comment is, is a. Can you, so those, those are big problems.
You would know better than I. Can you test for that? Like if you went in for a, anything, would that show up on?
They're testing all the time, fentanyl now because it's such a big problem. And those tests are being quite readily available to save people from overdose.
Is it a urine, urine test?
I am unaware. These are, these are probably urine tests.
These are all urine tests. Yeah.
This is a state program, isn't it?
State info.
So although we may think it's not up to date, I'm not sure we can change it at town level.
Right.
And, you know, it doesn't sound like it's up to date because it's missing a big enchilada in terms of way too much trouble.
Is it possible that it's not legal to test through without? I don't know. Just decide the road.
I don't know.
I, I'm looking at that, put up that policy as a DOT random drug test policy versus a personnel drug use policy.
Right.
I, I, I don't think we can change much of the federal policy, but we can certainly add it to our own personnel. add it to our own personnel.
And.
I would adopt that as to if you want to, you could add another page with the Select Board Next Policy, but that meets state and federal requirements. So, if you adopt that, the VLCT will cover.
Will cover.
And then go ahead and change if you need to for, if there's an accident, the town requires you to also be checked for thiazone or however you want to do it, but.
Yes.
Separate, there.
Yeah, that'd be my recommendation to resolve that problem.
There's 11 pages, you want 11 pages?
Right.
No, no, what I'm saying is that, that is just a template, we just plug in Westminster where we need to adopt it. VLCT is happy, the state's happy, the feds are happy, and then you guys just come up with.
Yes, there are.
And bear that, policies, whatever.
There are, as you read through this draft from VLCT, there's points of guidance where it says, you know, if you have a town policy regarding who pays for follow-up drug testing, if somebody tested positive, if you have a policy, you add that.
And that's where you would.
You would, you'd add it to Section 403 Drug and Alcohol, section of the personnel policy.
Right, and where you, yeah, you like put in your little C personnel policy.
Yeah, because it doesn't, other than, it just says drug, marijuana, and alcohol behavior guidelines, it really doesn't give like specific.
Right.
Drugs, sorry, whatever. It's pretty general.
Yeah, one of the thoughts that I had was we can, we can adopt the basic, we can choose to adopt the basic policy and then discuss the points of guidance about, because I don't think our personnel policy necessarily addresses some of these things.
Well, it just says influence of alcohol, marijuana, illegal drugs, or controlled substances not authorized by a physician.
Right.
That kind of covers that, I guess.
Right.
Just doesn't list it by specifics, but it.
Right.
Kind of covers it, so I mean, we don't need to worry about that.
Yeah.
We have to have the DOT one back to them by September 10th.
Yeah, yeah.
Does anybody have any, does anybody have any other major issues with the Boilerplate one?
I do not.
I didn't have any major issues with the Boilerplate one, it was just.
All right.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion that we accept the VLCT Drug and Alcohol Policy as presented. I don't remember what the meeting was, a couple meetings ago. Do you have a date, is there a date?
I don't think so, I don't think I have a date. No, hold on, I think I got the letter from.
Oh, from Wade?
Oh, yeah, I think I had it.
I don't have it.
I might not have thrown in the letter.
We can, we can just use it as presented.
Yeah.
Seconded.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt the CDL Driver Drug Test, Drug Testing Policy.
As presented by VLCT.
By VLCT.
Yep.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. All right. Managers report.
So, you probably saw the roof repair quotes, very different. It's not an agenda item, but I had them, so I thought I'd give it to you to look over. I also asked, I asked for three bids that for move companies that specialize in slate, my first choice could not, Tim Smith couldn't, just couldn't, and especially whether it might be a leaking problem. So, only two people quoted. I also asked that whichever company you choose, that they do spring maintenance to check the slates, so we're not in this big issue like we are now. Fuel bids went out a little late, so I gave the companies until August 30th to get the bids back in and I thought we could do a quick get together to agree on the propane and oil. We've been struggling to get the elevator repaired. We finally had accessibility, Inc. here today and he ran into some issues and it still isn't repaired. I will, the more I get on that, the more I'll, but you know, okay. But we are trying. We had one company just said, no, we're not going. We had another company that didn't answer the phone and then this fellow did and he got here as soon as he could, but he's four months out, so we kind of did us a favor on booking. So, I will personally be out August 30th to 9/1. Labor Day weekend, we close Monday. Kelly is out August 28th and 29th and Pauline is out the 28th and 30th. I couldn't even let Pauline say that, but that's her age, she's good. And we are going to be involved in environmental court again for Historic Review Board, DRB rejection or some property area five.
Please.
When DRB Development Review Board refuses someone to do something and on their property, that person has a right to go above the Development Review Board and go to environmental court through the state and we have to pay our side of the attorney fee. Carport in the historic district, which we had already allowed one carport to be placed because of the handicap accessibility.
On the same property.
Of the same property, so we denied a second carport and they denied a second carport on that property. So, we're now going to be involved in that.
Are we still involved with Cold Copping?
Yes, we are, and we just got a lot of built a lot of, yeah. Because that notebook is just like.
Oh, I don't doubt, I just hadn't heard anything about it.
Yeah, we still get bills for it.
Just backing up a little bit, looking at this brown roofing versus Janquitz, we have of course a 1,325 versus 42,334.
It is not apples to apples.
Of course, but it is very different. What are we doing? Or what, how?
So, this, so the historical society is here every Saturday from 24 and Jesse has pointed out, there was, this corner over here was saturated. The last time, and so I was asked, I presented it to the Select Board, I don't know if it needs to probably work here at that, at that particular meeting, but I was asked to get quotes from Roof Repair. Jan Switz used a drone, as you can see by.
My pictures, yeah, first of all.
And, and he found a lot of problems, so. I came to this, first came to this building in 2014 and that's where they were, is it called People? They were up repairing that and slate and a lot of, and painting and so, as you can see, we're in major disrepair again because we haven't maintained anything.
Yeah, and it's actually sort of complicated roofs, there's a lot of angles to it and judges and ice, those other tear slate and that sort of stuff. There's certain rights that we need to do it regularly, but I was wondering, how do we move forward to stop this? Where, where are we?
Let me fix it.
Are we going to Janquitz and saying, yes?
I, I know that, I put that on your plate.
Here's one thing I can say about.
It's not an agenda item.
I'm just running to Brown, the Brown guys. So, the lady I date in Keene is having them do her house, she's got a slate roof, a suite actually. Her father was the, the head supervisor for McMillan Company for years, he's retired now. So, he, he highly recommended them, so he was, and McMillan did, guy built all the, he was head of all the projects, all those, you know, older people, older housing homes. Keene built a lot of stuff there all over in the, but really, really good man, I met him.
This is McMillan, not Brown.
This is McMillan, this guy, yeah, my, my friend's father. So, he highly recommended him, that's, that's all I can say. They came in, they gave her, I think they didn't fly a drone up, but I had a feeling when they get up there, there was a, I think I read that, that, you know, they may look up there and see some more, but I think it might be worth contacting them again and saying, hey, we just got these other guys that flew a drone up and they were way higher, we want to make sure that your quote is your quote, what you're really going to do, I think.
We could also, they don't need to fly a drone, they can just give them pictures without the wet mask.
Yeah, yeah. Look at this, don't give them the number, yeah, just give them the pictures.
The fellow that came, his name was Joe, and he admittedly said he does not get on ladders anymore. He most certainly wasn't going to get on a ladder going up this.
Yeah, yeah.
You don't realize that's the only way to fix it.
I gotta believe that 1,300 bucks is going to grow exponentially.
Yeah, so what we need is actually, I mean, this is a real quote for Janquitz, you know, and they, they're very good, but what we need is a couple more real quotes and then we need to, David Brown, a little bit, say, well, could you, if you look at the rest of this stuff and, and give us, give us a quote of what it's going to cost to fix all these problems. And they're nicely circled in red and they're quite visible and you don't even need to own a drone. But, but clearly 1,300 isn't even paid for all the slates they have to use here, so.
I, this quote came in late, this Jan Switz came in late today, so that's what I had to give you, but I will reach out to.
Certainly.
I will reach out to Brown tomorrow and.
Is, is there another slate roofing competitor in this area, I'm thinking of Bradwell.
Yes, that's one of my drafts.
Well, I purposely looked up slate roofing quotes and I ended up with three local people. Bob Long Roofing, which is Tim Smith, Jan Switz, and this Brown. Man, I can go around.
I think we need to go to Bradwell area too. There's, and I do know that Bradwell.
There's a bunch.
Yeah, because there's so many slate roofs in Bradwell, there's a lot of, you know, contractors who work on them.
I, I know someone in Westminster that had their whole slate roof done two years ago for $20,000, a pretty size house, not a usual. It was a guy in, well, his nephew lives on Morse Brook Road, but he lives in Wyndham. I could get that name, scary enough project, so you should be able to attract some people and I think they were very reasonable.
I, I would hope we wouldn't have to pay as much as Janquitz.
Yeah.
Is.
I agree.
Yeah, that's a little high.
But it is, but they are very specific showing what they do, what they'll do, and I'm sure they're very jolly, it's just that it costs an arm and leg. It's not just for re-roofing it, we're just fixing this. So, I think we, we have to, this is, this is an ideal place to use competitive bidding and to go out and educate us about what needs doing and hopefully get it done at a reasonable sum for the town.
Did anybody give any indication about how soon they do it? I'm assuming probably next year at this point.
Probably.
So, my main concern obviously has always been money. My question is, the reason this has come to our attention is we have some serious leaks and can we manage with the budget this year by plugging those areas that are essential, meaning where at the moment we need to fix a few things? So that way for Town Hall, this is excellent, it's comprehensive and it gets the job done. Obviously, it's, again, it's just one, but before we go polishing our laurels and spending another $50,000, I think we could definitely, as they say, things broke, don't fix it, fix what we have to, at least this year, such as that corner, we have plenty of contractors that can come here and certainly stabilize the ship until we get, I mean, this type of stuff I think needs to go in front of the town, I'll tell you why. Everything that was done in this building has been a major issue and it's still a major issue for people. Before we spend a whole bunch of money again on something that was done not that long ago, I think we should see if we can get the essential things that need to be done, partially done to get us through until we can get money from the taxpayers and say, yeah, go ahead, we do the whole thing.
Kevin, I disagree. I think the town taxpayers are, expect us not to let their investment in this town, in this town hall, the insulation that's up there, go to pot simply because we're dragging your toes.
We're not dragging any toes.
Well, I, I, looking at the.
The whole respect.
The number of, of leaks in here and the number of places identified in Janquitz, that there is a lot of work to be done.
Well, Jan was through, flew something on the outside, he didn't come in here and tag everything on the inside.
Yes.
And I have, I have one of the most historic homes in the town, I have a certain idea of what goes on here and also I'm very familiar over the last six years of the money expenditures on this building and being called out repeatedly at Town Hall for expenditures that I didn't make, didn't approve, and as a taxpayer, taxpayer would have been, would have liked to have had prior disclosure before we made those decisions. I fully understand that there are issues with this building, but we're talking about eight months and critical issues such as that, to preserve our historic society's documents, artifacts, and to make sure that the building is structurally sound, which it still is, we can do partial repairs with the limited amount of money that we have in order to get us through to town meeting to tell the folks, hey, look, we really need to fix it, to come back to how you just eloquently said it, so that way we're preserving the entire building.
Yeah, but I guess I, I do, I think, I think it's going to go that way anyway, just because we will take a while to get the contractor to do the work.
Okay.
So, it will probably not be done in the correct town meetings, it's an argument, maybe a little, but I do want to say that we're not just preserving the historical society's collection here, we have insulation up here that's getting all sodden. Then insulation gets sodden, you get rot and pests up there or moles up there. And then if we get enough leakage, we start destroying our floor below us.
Well, Stephen, I think what Kevin was saying is we need to get the guys up there and say, fix what's leaking. If there's a little crack and there's no leak, we can hit, just, I think we should get almost like, what does it cost to fix exactly what's leaking? And then anything you see to really go through it, maybe next year, give you the fine tune.
Yeah, but if you look at these pictures, you see a lot of places where it is.
It looks bad, but they don't, it doesn't mean they're leaking.
Well, if.
They're leaking, they're leaking, if they're not, they're not.
If there's straightforward holes right through, as there are, water's going down through and it may, you know, flow in different directions, but it looks like there is plenty of places where you could know that water will be going straight on through.
Well, that's their job, make sure.
And so, so, so I, I, I'm just agreeing that we need to, to stop leaking and that
Probably their availability to get here to do more than stop the leaking will probably determine what we do.
You need to have those guys, you know, we always have them come in here and, you know, give them, give us your expert, you know, opinion. We're, we're shooting the dark, none of us are roofers, but I have a pretty good idea what's going on.
I'm not, I'm not arguing for accepting of Janquitz.
Right, no, I hear you, I hear you on that.
But, but I, I do see that their drone did a fine job and their red pen did a fine job at certain, at noting very specific and easily seen problems.
To, to speak on Kevin's point about town meeting, this building also has a vault that is settling downstairs and front steps that still need maintenance every single, twice a year, paint that's falling off the buildings, soffits that are rotted, you take this, I'm, I'm not saying we're going to, but oh yeah, 1,300 bucks, go ahead and do it, that's going to grow and grow, you start tearing into something, it's an old building, your, your house is older than mine, you, actually everybody's here, why is it? Where does it end? I mean, it's just, it's going to be a lot, a lot of money and it does need to be fixed, I'm not disputing that it needs to be fixed.
That's why I'm saying we need to have them come in here, do some proposal, tell us what's going on, so we can make a good decision.
So, I would like to make a motion to move on, that we ask town manager to seek out a couple more bids for this roofing job, so that we can get a wider impression of what we have to do, okay? And, and the bids, you know, you can communicate with them, what do we need to do to stop the leaks and what do we do to do maintenance? It is probably two separate things, but we clearly need to know more. And so, that's, that's my, my motion is that we ask for more bids. And, uh, so that's, that's my motion, is that we ask for more bids from other contractors in the area, I'm not very specific about them, but...
I'll second that.
It is a slate mover, does need to, somebody's from the slate.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Road Performance Report.
Oh, Zappalings is going to firm it for his Class B CBL, which we have to become trainers, so I don't know how long it's where, but they change the ruling. So you can't just have somebody like William up and get their CBL. You have to become a certified trainer through the state. So we did that, so that we can train in-house, which makes it a little bit easier when you hire people that you can train them. We're continuing to go around mowing, grading. We're still trying to spot grading, we're trying not to open up any roofs that are really hard right now. We've been getting a lot of rainfall raining, so if we leave them until we have season, just before winter, we'll go around and grade again and roll and make a little smoother. So a few, you know, a few boughs of the Dodge, we filled a few to take some of the urchin out. I met with the participation committee down beyond Allen Brothers, and we looked at the swamp down there, and we talked about the beaver receiver, which would help maintain the water level from one side of the road to the other. They got a grant to purchase a beaver receiver. And we're constantly, we go down there 25 or 30 times a year to muck out in front of that culvert because when you're headed out from Allen Brothers, the left side, they dam it up and it continues to come, and what it does is it saturates the road base, makes it pot holy, they have to grade more often. So over behind ATG is the outlet. They have a dam there also, and we constantly have to go over there. Well, the committee talked about using their funding to put a receiver over there to regulate the water level, potentially the whole area, to maintain it. And what I would like to do is use 5,000 dollars out of my culvert fund to put another beaver receiver on the roadside to maintain the water level there. We used to, we dealt with it over at Westminster West by the firehouse, we used to... Weep for the backup, and now it's a couple times a year. And that seems to maintain the water level a few away from the road. Tim Allen, he's for it, essentially his property is within our range. So before I do that though, it would be great to have everybody's blessing to do that. I know it's within my budget, it's within my, I can do it, it's, you know, like I said, it's only 5,000 dollars, but at the end of the day...
Does this come with, you probably know his name, what's the guy's name, the beaver guy?
Yeah, Stipwile, yeah. Probably the only guy that does it.
Is he gonna take care of maintenance and all that? I thought that was, when you bought him from him, he...
No, he just did a bunch of work till one in Westminster West, and they, nobody paid for that, so... I'm guessing must be, I don't...
I'm just curious.
I guess I honestly can't answer that. I have that, but I don't know that for a fact.
I don't care what you do, but my personal opinion is when beavers start affecting your roads, the beavers need to go away. So they're not gonna like to hear that, it's not gonna be popular, but that's my opinion.
In terms of, the problem is...
Everybody wants to live with the beavers now.
Well, they're a rodent, and they re, I don't, I'm not excited about the beavers. But the problem is that re, re-breed, and you can't... You don't have anybody on payroll trapping beavers, so I was just...
If it'll work and it'll keep your road where you want it, I'm...
As a veterinarian, I am categorically opposed to lake hold traps. They're terribly cruel to me.
There's a ton, there's a ton of traffic watching the back of the...
And also, as of Monday, Monday, during the day, a otter was caught in the lake hold trap in Westminster West, was brought in my clinic with the trap still attached. Trap was removed, the leg was broken, it was sent down to Tufts Wildlife Clinic for bone painting. It was not trapping season, and it was not on land, and the landowner had not granted permission. It was by the Lowe's, POW, MIA, a little monument there. And so there are downsides of public impression, as well as, damn it, that's a cruel thing to do on the trapping thing. And these beaver receivers are labor reducers for our town. So much as we might say, well, let's get rid of beavers, as pointing out, and the beaver receivers is a pretty reasonable way of getting the job done. Any infrastructure you put in a stream is gonna need maintenance. And I'm sure... ...of backhoe trips out to those locations and make the whole town road crews' labor obligation less.
But we approved one year before, right?
Yeah. They pulled off Westminster West from the firehouse, and it seems to be effective. When they first talked about it, I was like, yeah, okay. Putting some device to whisper the beavers, yeah, this ain't gonna work.
And everyone...
What's that?
And everyone didn't support it.
And it works good, and it's a good, I think it helps everybody find a common ground.
So do we need a motion for this?
Everybody, no?
No, I think we can...
Yep.
To authorize the Highway Department to allocate 5,000 dollars, up to 5,000 dollars, for the purchase of a beaver receiver to be located...
At the Headwood Hill Road Marsh.
At Headwood Hill Road Marsh.
I'll second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you.
I'd just like to make a motion to clarify our past issues that we, I make a motion that we approve both the Town Managers' and Road Performance Reports, just to acknowledge that we've been here and have heard them.
Seconded.
Motion has been made and seconded to accept the Town Manager and Road Performance Report. Any discussion, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I do have one question on the...
Sorry.
It's nothing to do with the report, but there's, we're at full staff, seven full-time people. Correct?
We've got, for the seventh guy, we've got three part-time guys working. We've got Larry Allen, who works...
Okay, well, let's go backwards, so we got you...
So we've got myself, Ben Shore, Jason Benson, Jim DeBel, Cory, Zach Rollings, Cory, six. And your seventh guy is...
Uh, my math is wrong.
Paul Hadley. Walt, that guy's there, and we're sure those part-time guys get any benefits at all.
No, but those are part-time guys, and this payroll was 3,350 dollars. Gross pay.
Sorry, excuse me.
So those three are costing us more than one.
33?
Well, you know, I've given them any insurance, you know, I've given them any, you know, I've given them any uniforms, you know, I've given them any vacation time, no sick time, no holiday time, no overtime. So at the end of the year, it's cheaper the longer.
Okay.
Close enough.
Was it, no?
Close enough to wash.
I, my math is wrong, I thought we had seven full-time, with Zach was the seventh. So I got it.
All right, next thing on the agenda that is in executive session, but I do have something else that I had forgotten that I will, I can bring up on our other business. It comes of resignation from, from the Planning Commission.
I'll make a motion that we go into executive session after other business for a personnel matter and invite the interim Town Manager and Highway Foreman.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Boards, committees, and commissions. All right, other business.
Thank you.
Thank you. I received an email from Richard Crocker last night. The Westminster Select Board, please accept my resignation effective 8/22/2023. I feel that as a planning commission, we are overdue on the time needed to complete our new town plan. I suggest the board, I suggest to the board that a complete reset of the committee and plan may be necessary. He cites the state statute regarding municipal development plan that has a process for re-adopting the town plan. He states this is by time for completing a proper assessment and plan, hire a town manager, and then zoning administrator to implement the plan. The commission has had issues, not enough members, their previous chair had passed away, and COVID. Lack of a town manager and zoning administrator are also a problem. Signed, Richard Crocker.
Motion to accept Richard Crocker's letter of resignation for the Planning Commission.
I'll second.
Motion has been made and seconded to accept the resignation of Richard Crocker from the Planning Commission.
I already get another person, I already cured myself.
Also with, with our thanks for his service.
Yeah, he was very active on talking about housing issues. I was sat in as a select board rep to the Planning Commission Zoom meetings, and he was quite diligent, I'm sort of too bad that he's, not as if we need less people involved. Anyway...
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's all I have. So...
Where are we on that?
Date of next meeting is Wednesday, September 13th, 2023.
Are we still on other business?
Oh, yep, unless you have other business, sorry.
Well, just, we should advertise for...
Planning Commission opening on committees.
Well, all committees, really, but whether it's on the website or on the website and the... Is that...
Yeah.
Interested parties. Does that leave them with even enough people to...
They have Michelle, Seroya, Barry.
I thought Barry got them, huh?
No.
Oh, I'm thinking of...
Kathy did, so that's, that's three, only three people.
So they have...
They have, they have quorum, they technically still have quorum.
If they didn't have a quorum, then the alternate would have to go and vote and be a voting member.
That's right.
Yeah.
And, sorry, anyone of interest?
Yes, there are two.
So like, before, when you would go through a Zoom, you can go, but you're not a voting member, you're just...
Yeah, I'm not voting, but...
You're the alternate, though.
Not jumping in the conversation, but if I'm going there and I need a person to make a quorum, should I be a, a Planning Commission member?
I think you need to, yeah.
Yeah, maybe we should make...
That's an excellent question.
I mean, I, 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 yeah, everybody else wants to do this, it's fine. And it's Zooming, I hate Zoom meetings, but anyway.
Should we...
The LCT question.
Yeah, yeah, I think it is. We'll get back to you on that one.
That's fine.
Next meeting.
I guess I'm sort of...
You're not in any hurry, are you?
I'll sort of balk there.
Well, they don't have, they will have a meeting.
Yeah, it'll go as the select board, the ultimate ref.
Yes, Nate will jump in, I know he's busy, but I'll ask him.
We give the select board a minute, and if they need somebody, they can ask.
People have a song today.
But without, without being, it's not that the votes are hardly ever any, you know, contention. It's more, the people who are actually on the Planning Commission are doing work and calling people and talking and making plans up about what our housing policy involves accessory dwelling units. So where, yeah, that's actually what Richard was working on, was encouraging, increasing housing density usage by allowing for more accessory dwellers. accessory dwellers, it's the sort of situation where...
The tiny house situation.
Or tiny house, or somebody just living here. Yeah. Living with my dad. All those.
All right. Find out, I'll let you know at the next meeting.
Sure.
All right, any other business? Date of next meeting, Wednesday, September 13th, 2023.
This meeting was recorded by Falls Area Community Television, located at One Hospital Court, Bellows Falls, Vermont. If you would like a copy of the meeting, our phone number is 802-463-1613. Or email us at fact@10@gmail.com. Falls Area Community TV, keeping government honest.